Welcome to the Corder Madera Planning Commission for Tuesday, May 8th, 2018. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Wolf, would you please call the roll?
Sure. Commissioner McHaff.
Here.
Commissioner Bundy.
Here.
Commissioner Chase.
Here.
Commissioner Friedman.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Thank you. At this point in every meeting, we open it up to public comment for something that is not on the agenda, but I suspect that everybody is here for one reason. So, but if you have something you'd like to say, please step up to the microphone. You have three minutes. I don't see anybody jerking or standing up, so I will say that I want to remind everybody about our election next week at this moment in time. And there are, I don't know if the candidates are here or not, but I don't believe they are.
June 5th, right?
June 5th, yeah.
And, I'm sorry, next month, yes, right.
But you start voting absentee now.
We're thinking about the election tonight in other states, so, anyway, excuse my error there. So, anyway, it's election. I hope everybody will turn out. There are four mayoral candidates for the town of Corder Madera Town Council. We need everybody's vote to show up. With that said, we're going to move on to the reason we're here tonight, which is a new hearing, formerly titled Amy's Drive-Thru Restaurant, 5839 Paradise Drive: Consideration and Possible Planning Commission Recommendation to the Corder Madera Town Council Regarding: Zoning Ordinance Amendment; Two: A Conditional Use Permit; Three: Design Review; and Four: Assigned Permit to Allow for Construction and Operation of a Restaurant with Drive-Thru Lane at 5839 Paradise Drive. So, do any of the commissioners have any disclosures they'd want to make about this tonight?
I've heard two presentations from Amy's, one at the Corder Madera Community Foundation and one at the Corder Madera Lions Club. And I've also interacted with some of the businesses on Paradise to get their sense of.
Anybody else? Okay.
We've all visited the site.
Yeah, we've all been to the site, I think, yes. We did have this as a previous presentation, and Mr. Bush is going to take us through that, I believe. So, Mr. Bush, it is yours to explain this application. Thank you.
All righty then, thank you. So, as you mentioned, we did receive a preliminary application that was reviewed before the Planning Commission in September of last year, and the applicants came back in December of 2017 with an application for the entitlements that you just summarized there. So, in my presentation, I'm going to go over, kind of briefly, over the project description, kind of go through some of the drawings and highlight the design and the entitlements that are being requested, and then discuss some of staff's, kind of discussion of the findings and the proposed zoning ordinance amendments for you tonight. And just a little bit of housekeeping, we do have a couple of staff reports, or a few staff reports should be back on the back table, and you've also received some late communications that we've received, since, I believe, yesterday, in front of you today, so.
Yeah, and there's also some additional copies of that late correspondence provided at the back table as well.
Thank you. All right. All right.
So, I want to go through some of the existing conditions here, sort of looking at the site. I'm sure most of you are familiar with the site by this point, but just wanted to look at some of the surrounding land uses and get a sense of where we're talking about tonight. So, this is an isolated parcel, kind of elongated shape there, just east of Highway 101. It's surrounded by a variety of land uses from automobile dealerships like Mini and Acura, as well as, you know, a dog kennel, large equipment rental facility, you know, a car, a couple other car-related uses, as you can kind of see here. So, it's in a, it's in the C3 zone, and the C3 zone only applies to that parcel in the specific area. We'll go over that in just a moment here. But the C3 district is really about automobile-oriented uses, such as car dealerships, car washes, restaurants, motels, gas stations, service stations, that sort of use. So, that's the zoning district that we're focusing on tonight in regards to the proposed zoning ordinance amendments. Kind of showing here in the bottom right, the parcel can be seen here as one of the C3 parcels. They're also located adjacent to Pfeiffer and Meadowsuite and Casa Buena as well. So, just to look at the kind of existing conditions of the site, this was previously a Denny's. That's really the only use that's ever occupied the site from about 1969, 1970. It went in, and it was a sit-down restaurant that operated for over 40 years. I believe it closed down in 2014 and has been vacant since that time. The site accommodates around 57 cars. It's, the building itself is around 3,700 square feet, and this application would result in the demolition of that existing building and the reconfiguration of the site. As I mentioned before, this is kind of a unique, a unique parcel, very much so, because it's, doesn't have any directly adjacent or directly abutting uses or other properties. It's right next to 101, between 101 and Paradise Drive, a two-lane road with on-street parking on either side of it. There's also a number of easements that run through the parcel, both a sewage pump station, which takes up a portion of the lot at the southern end, as well as PG&E easements and others that sort of run through the site. The proposed project, like I mentioned, would result in the demolition of the existing structure for a proposed restaurant with drive-thru. It would be just slightly larger than the existing structure at 4,100 square feet, be located further to the south on the property with the refuse enclosure that's shown just south of that. It would provide approximately 140 seats for patrons, both divided between the indoor seating and the outdoor seating. The outdoor seating would have kind of a shade-livered structure over it that could both be open and let sunlight in, or it could be closed completely on those rare days that we do have rain here. And then the parking lot also, where it is now on either side of the structure, would be contained to the northern part, and the whole configuration would allow for a drive-thru that would run really the length of the parcel. There would also be a change to where the driveways are located. As you can see here, they've been proposed at the north, the central part of the lot, as well as an exit for the drive-thru, a dedicated exit on the southern, southern portion there. Kind of going a little more detail here on that drive-thru, which would be designed to accommodate 19 cars, two of which would be in the kind of pull-forward area there at times of higher volume to allow the queue to run efficiently. There's also employee parking spaces that are located just adjacent to that to help accommodate for parking for the employees, obviously. And then here's the detail also of how the outdoor seating area would generally be configured, as well as the indoor seating area shown, shown here. And then just to the south of that would be the refuse enclosure, which would be covered with solar panels, as would the area over the drive-thru, to provide some shade and also some, obviously, some electricity as well. Going into the elevations here, kind of you can see, I think, one of the most notable design features here is the very unique green roof element, which would be a vegetated roof that would be maintained with live plants, which, which is visible from all elevations. On the top here, you're looking at the east elevation. This is what you would see if you were standing on Paradise Drive, looking toward the building. Again, between the building and the street would be that outdoor seating area and the covered, the shade structure there. Looking at the west elevation, just below that, would be kind of theoretically what you'd see from the highway with that sort of dormer element that pops out with the primary identification sign, you know, visible from the highway, affixed to the building. The, you can see there's kind of two, two sections of massing on the, on the structure. The green roof is over the primary portion, and the lower roof element kind of extends out over the kitchen. You have sort of a separate elevation on the bottom to show that, really from the highway, you'd be seeing a fence that's sort of a textured, I believe, a textured concrete fence, kind of slatted, looked like wood but more durable, which would have vines that would be planted to grow over it. So, you could sort of combine both of those bottom elevations to get a better sense of how it would appear from the highway. Looking here from the north elevation, which would be from the proposed location of the parking lot, one of the elements you see here is a sign, a sign that would be located above one of the entrances. Each one of the primary entrances has, has a sign that kind of highlights that, that entry. The south elevation really would be one of the more difficult elevations to see in reality because of the sewage pump station that's located at that portion of the lot and the large number of trees there. So, it's less, you know, obviously, less detailed elevation, much less visible. And then also, you can see here, sort of, that there, there is that PG&E easement. You do have the adjacency to the highway, and the location of the drive-thru would be located between the structure and the highway, instead of being located adjacent to the, to the roadway or in a more visible location. And here's another rendering. Several other kind of oblique views are shown in the plans. And, you know, they're available in the plans, but they're also available at the end of the presentation if we want to look at some other views of the, of the building. As you can see here, there's a number of trees and landscaping that would be introduced throughout the site. Kind of going in the landscaping plan here, what they provided is sort of a schedule of all of the different plants that would be selected from to help green the site. Landscaping would be used throughout for, you know, aesthetic and environmental reasons, also to provide storm, stormwater retention. Bioswales would be used between the parking lot and the roadway and throughout the site. So, they appear as landscaping elements, but in fact, they're doing more, more than one purpose, more than one duty there. And of course, the green, the green roof that we mentioned. So, while a number of the plannings would be, are to be determined, the primary, the larger, more visible plannings, the, the trees have been called out here, the specific types. Obviously, it's not easy to identify in this, at this scale, but on the plans, you can see that the trees have been called out, the specific species. There's a number of trees on the site that are primarily eucalyptus trees that were planted around the time that the Denny's was, was developed, non-native trees, a number of which would be removed to make way for this, this proposed landscaping. An arborist report was provided with the application, and the arborist recommended removal of a majority of those trees due to structural defects. And so, here you see the, the full site with the landscaping provided. It's also kind of strategically placed between the parking lot and the drive-thru to, again, provide some visual screening of the cars, to help attenuate the sound, and also provide shading elements, partly to, you know, reduce the use of, and the need for air conditioning when you're, when you're sitting there, and also reducing pollution associated with that. Looking at the lighting, there's a pretty comprehensive lighting plan that's provided. I've just provided a selection here. Of note, a majority of the lighting is for, you know, safety and general purpose. Some of the lighting has been provided to help accentuate some of the textures on the building and also light the signage. Of note here is that the color temperature of the lighting would be in that 3,000 Kelvin range that's desirable throughout, throughout town, something that's not bright white and, you know, not, not too dark either. And dimble LEDs would be used, so these could be adjustable to, to get them to appropriate levels. And the actual details of the different types of lights and locations are called out in the plans. Happy to answer any questions on those when, when the time is right. Here's a signage plan. I've kind of circled what are the branded signs. These are the identification signs. There's a number of other signs on the, on the site that are proposed, but most of them are directional signage provided in the parking lot, things that would say, you know, entry, exit, that sort of thing. Those have been divided out in the plan for clarity between those, those signs that we're, we're looking at as branding and those that we're just looking at as essential to the proper function of the circulation of the site. The maximum amount of square footage of signage that's permitted on this lot is 150 square feet, and they're below that maximum. As you may note, there was a previous signage element, a water tower element, that was part of the plan, the preliminary plans that were submitted in September, that's since been removed in consultation with staff, partly because there were issues with, you know, the overall size of the signage. So, they've now presented a, a plan here that meets the, the standards of both the underlying zoning district and the San Clemente Paradise specific plan that applies to this, this area, the specific corridor. And of note, also, there's kind of a sign there, the Amy's Drive-Thru signs, about four feet tall, that is sort of silhouette of Mount Tam, something that's unique, obviously unique to this location. And then talking a bit about the process and what this application, what entitlements are being requested and would be required for approval of this, conditional use permit, design review, signed permit, and zoning ordinance amendments. So, we're going to kind of go through just generally what that process would be, and then talk a bit more, you know, in relation to this specific project and how it may meet those findings. So, first of all, a typical restaurant in the C3 zoning district would require a conditional use permit. The idea behind a conditional use permit is that there are certain, certain uses that are permitted by right and other uses which may be compatible with the zoning district but, but require more case-by-case determination of appropriate conditions, you know, taking into account the specific location of those proposed uses. And like I said, a, a restaurant would be an example of one of those conditional uses already set for the C3 district. This would be a restaurant with a drive-thru, which would be a different use and would require different considerations. So, as part of the evaluation of any application for a conditional use permit, there are several findings that are listed here, and they're generally, the intent is to assess whether the proposed use would be consistent with the zoning district and C3, as we discussed, is an automobile-oriented district, and also consistent with general plan, and that the specific conditions that it would be operated on, for instance, the time of day that it would be run, or the noise it may generate, those sorts of things, could be discussed on a site-by-site and case-by-case basis. And of course, the design review findings that we're all so much more familiar with, with many of the projects that come through the Planning Commission for review, that, that have to do with the scale of the project, the aesthetics, the design, the design language in relation to the neighboring buildings, in relation to the broader community, and we'll go through some of those in a few minutes here. And so, just as an example of what conditional use table looks like, and what we're really talking about here, is the proposal to add a use. So, there's literally a table in the zoning ordinance for permitted and conditional uses in commercial districts. This is what it looks like, and it's broken out by each zoning district. So, certain uses, such as stock brokerage, would be a conditional use in the regional shopping district, but not a conditional use in C1, C3, or C4. What's being proposed here, as is kind of highlighted here, is the restaurant with the drive-thru, and the proposal is to add it as a conditional use just to the C3 district. So, there are findings related to conditional uses that are already in this table. For instance, the restaurant or a stock brokerage that would want to go in, they would have to meet those three findings. For a proposed new use to even add it to that table, there are these initial findings that would need to be made. These, again, relate to the consistency with the purpose of the underlying zoning district, whether it will be consistent with the character of other uses, you know, obviously, how it would affect public health, safety, and welfare, and that it will not create more vehicular traffic than the volume created by other uses. So, sort of looking at what is the expected intensity of these other uses in a conditional use table, how would this relate to those? In this particular case, something like a, a service station with a mini mart, you know, a gas station with a mini mart, would be expected to generate, or estimated to generate, you know, 190% of what the proposed drive-through with, drive-through use. So, in that particular finding, clearly, it would not create more vehicular traffic than other uses. Also, looking at, you know, odor, dust, dirt, smoke, kind of objectionable potential effects on neighboring properties. So, all these findings would have to be made to add this as a use. In addition, the application includes a couple of supplementary findings. So, we have those original, those existing conditional use permit findings, the three. The application suggests that because of the kind of unique nature of this type of use, that there should be additional considerations that should apply for any application for a, for a drive-thru. Staff also agrees that this is a, a use which should have some unique standards and unique considerations by virtue of having a drive-thru, which is kind of a, a unique, an element that's unique to this use. Staff differs somewhat in the kind of direction of the approach to how, how that should be accommodated, and staffers proposing several zoning ordinance amendment changes that are sort of outlined here. And just to go over them briefly, like I said, supplementary conditional use findings specific to a drive-thru, definitely adding a definition for a restaurant with drive-thru so we know when, when that comes up in the zoning ordinance, what that refers to exactly, to make it a conditional use, like we showed in the table of uses, and to add standards for the use, such as, you know, requiring that there be landscaping, as there is in the, in the application, between the drive-thru and the parking area to provide visual screening and noise attenuation, et cetera. And also, to have a standard that's being proposed for, that the drive-thru lane shall not kind of impede access to the, the parking lot, and it should be somewhat independent. I don't know about others, but personally, I've, I've been in a situation where, you know, you're trying to back out of a, a space, and the drive-thru might wind through the parking, the parking lot, and they sort of conflict. This, one of the proposed standards would, would prevent that from occurring. There's also the parking standard with, basically, restaurants have a one space per 75 square feet of gross floor area requirement. It's understood that because a drive-thru has both sit-down accommodations and a drive-thru, that the share of, of patrons between those two things would necessitate lower parking standards. So, one per 100, one space per 100 square feet standard is, is proposed. So, kind of going through in relation to this, each of these findings now and this particular use, and whether this use should even be added to the conditional use list, and therefore, whether this application, you know, in its current form should be considered. We've kind of gone through some of these things, but, but fundamentally, the question here is, is this use of a restaurant with drive-thru consistent with the other uses and the purpose of the C3 district? Being that it's an automobile-oriented district, being that there's many, many uses, such as car washes, automobile dealerships, restaurants, motels, these sorts of uses, staff feels as though this, this proposed use is very consistent with the underlying purposes of this district. Furthermore, sort of looking at the character of the district, I mean, when you look at this, this sort of area in particular and the sort of condition of the site, the idea of a, of a drive-thru that would bring vitality to the district, bring more, bring more foot traffic, and kind of really renovate and breathe new life into the site, this would be an example of how that would be very consistent with the district and would potentially benefit surrounding uses as well. Again, looking at the vehicular traffic, as described with the example of, of a gas station with a mini mart, you know, that's a currently conditionally permitted use in this zone, and drive-thru restaurant would be expected to generate far less traffic than that. And ultimately, there's nothing kind of about a drive-thru use that would necessarily create any more dust, dirt, smoke, noise, vibration than other surrounding uses, such as a car mechanic, or a car wash, or any of the other uses that are in this specific zone. So, staff feels as though these findings can be met, and the use should be considered for an addition to the, to the conditional use table in the C3 zone in particular. And again, this is, this is about whether the use should be added to that table. It's less about whether this, it's, it's not particularly about this application, because the C3 district occurs throughout town, and this is one example of a C3 property. At the same time that we have these uses, staff also felt that there was a need for the supplementary findings and other standards. So, to kind of go through these examples that would apply specifically to restaurants with drive-thrus, the first finding, the intent, well, basically, the finding is that the drive-thru window, the outdoor dining areas, et cetera, have been located with consideration to neighboring properties. And this is about enabling the commission, enabling staff to receive applications like this and, and consider what are the surrounding uses, what makes the most sense for locating a drive-thru. In this particular example, you see a, a site that's very unique, that's not directly abutted by other properties and other uses. The drive-thru's been located between the property and the highway, so that it's not, and buffered with significant vegetation, so it's not highly visible, wouldn't generate noise near adjacent uses or other objectionable influence. So, that's the intent of this finding and how this particular project would meet that The next finding is about whether the drive-thru lane provides adequate onsite capacity, and I think this is kind of an obvious consideration. Hey, is the drive-thru lane going to accommodate the anticipated demand, and will it fit the cars that will, you know, want to, want to use it? And so, in this case, it's been observed that the Amy's in Robert Park at, at the peak times had 18 cars in the drive-thru. Staff has looked at a number of drive-thrus throughout Marin County, Sonoma County, looking at In-N-Out in Novato, and, you know, Panda Express and Starbucks in Marin City, and McDonald's in San Rafael, and a number of the drive-thrus throughout the county, and sort of compared this to what, what is seen elsewhere. And this is by far the longest and most significant capacity of a drive-thru, partly by virtue of the shape of this site. And what makes it so unique is that it can accommodate that, that long line of cars. So, staff feels as though, you know, this is a, this is an appropriate finding for this use, and that the proposed application would, would meet this finding. The third finding is about really avoiding cookie-cutter design and trying to encourage design that is unique, that respects the uniqueness of the, of the town and of the site, of the location. It's about avoiding, you know, feeling like you're in everywhere America. I don't know how else to say it. And I know that that, in looking at prior minutes of kind of this discussion of, of this use back in 93, 94 with the zoning ordinance amendments at that time, this, this was a concern, and I know this is a concern, and in the general plan, there's specific language, you know, arguing against corporate architecture or sort of a sense of sameness that would be promoted by, by a design that isn't unique to the location. And I think this is a good example, I mean, starting with the green roof element, of something that is very unique to this town, the use of the, you know, the sign with the Mount Tam silhouette that's unique to this location, and just the whole layout of the, of the plan has, has clearly been designed for this site, and it's not a one-size-fits-all sort of solution. So, staff feels as though this is a unique and beneficial design, and it would meet this finding. The restaurant with the drive-thru will not increase vehicular circulation through residential neighborhoods. Again, this is a, you know, is a consideration for us about looking at, you know, the traffic or the demand for use like this, where it might go, and how, trying to avoid those sort of objectionable influences and negative impacts, potential impacts on, on other properties. So, this is, is in an effort to avoid creating traffic through residential zones. And when you look through other C3 properties throughout town, and you think about, you know, that possibility of other applications coming in for this use, and, you know, you look at these C3 properties, and you start to look through these findings, and you think, you know, there is, there are the unique attributes of this site that don't occur elsewhere, that make this potentially an appropriate site for this use, where other sites may not be appropriate. And I think as you start to look through these findings, it, it really becomes clear that, that most, most properties would not potentially be able to meet these findings. And this is one of the kind of unique things about this site and why I think, you know, it's a, it's really inappropriate. it's a, it's really an appropriate consideration for, for a site of this location, dimension, and, and history. And then, there's the existing conditional use findings that we kind of discussed before, but the general idea that the, the underlying zoning district is about automobile-oriented uses, including restaurants, this is a type of restaurant that is automobile, that, that does accommodate automobiles in a unique way, and staff believes that both the existing and the proposed supplementary findings can be made for the project. Kind of going through the design review findings, we've touched on a lot of these things through the prior slides. Yeah, and the, and the staff report is something like twenty pages long, and there's a lot of information in there, so try to avoid repeating ourselves there. But happy to answer any questions on those design review findings. But ultimately, staff feels as though the scale of this project at point nine, point, is it point zero-nine F A R, when point three-four is the maximum for the site, the fact that the proposed height is very modest, at just over twenty-six feet, where I think thirty-five feet is the maximum height. It's a, it's a project which is very much in scale, I mean, really smaller than, than the other commercial developments in the immediate vicinity. And it's a very unique and inviting design, from the sort of green roof to substantial landscaping, real attention to detail on all elevations. The fact that it has an outdoor seating area that sort of sits between the building and the street, sort of welcomes people in, and provides a pedestrian and bike-friendly kind of interface. And ultimately, staff feels as though the design review findings can, can be made for the site. And I also wanted to touch on some of the public comments that we received, both after the packet went out, which had been provided, and provided at the back of the room as well, but also the comments that made it into the packet as well. Appreciate the feedback of, of the public, and I think we have representatives from Fair and Peers, which conducted a significant traffic study on this project, may have some words that they'd like to share as well.
Yeah, we thought it would be appropriate at this time to actually have, we have Bob Grandy from, from Fair and Peers here, who we, the town hired, to analyze and assess the, the transportation impacts, and also just look at the site plan and parking for this project, and provide their assessment for the town to consider.
Who?
Yes.
Thank you.
Set on.
Bob Grandy with Fair and Peers, principal based in our San Francisco office. I'm here with my colleague, Mike Hawkins, and we'll do a brief presentation, and we'll be happy to answer any questions after that. So, we prepared three different transportation assessments. The first two, the site plan and the parking assessment memo, were done very early in the process, and they were really intended to provide information to staff, to work with the applicant, to make refinements to the site plan, that has subsequently been made relative to issues like access and site distance at the driveways, the length of queuing, and the, and that Doug mentioned, and the drive-through, those kinds of issues, parking on-street, and relative to, so those, those two memos were done early, they, they have influenced the plan, I think, that you see before you. And then, we did the traffic impact assessment, which was the SEQA document that's required for the project. And so, I'm going to briefly go over kind of those findings. Amies is a, Doug mentioned this is a unique site, Amies is a unique drive-through use in terms of the, we think, the clientele. And so, while we do have national data on restaurants with drive-through, we felt that this was a very appropriate kind of situation to go collect data at the, the Rondert Park facility. We collected hours of data on weekdays, weekends, some twelve hours of data, to look at everything from volumes coming in and out of the driveways, to parking occupancy, to drive, drive-through queue lengths, and we, so we've got a tremendous amount of data on that site, and that informed everything that we looked at in terms of the site plan assessment and the SEQA, SEQA study. As far as the, the site plan review, one of the things that's integrated in the site plan text is a description of a crosswalk that would be added by the project. This would be right near the central driveway, just on the south side. City staff have, or town staff have taken a look, and there are some elements that would be included, including a rapid rectangular flashing beacon, which would, pedestrians' crossing could, could activate, and so cars driving down Paradise would see that a pedestrian is crossing, curb extensions to reduce that crossing distance, removal of parking spaces to improve site distance. Those are all part of the project that would be incorporated, that would be built with the project near that central driveway, so that people who are on the east side, which we expect would mostly be employees, but they could be people, just visitors, who park on the east side of the street, who are crossing, will have a safe place to cross the street to get to the restaurant. In terms of the parking assessment, a lot of what we looked at was the drive-through and the capacity, and I think Doug covered that very well. The, the traffic study that we prepared, look at the project both from existing and long-term perspective, accumulative perspective, we found that there were no significant impacts based on the city's threshold. Part of that is influenced by the fact that the, the Village Center has a long-planned expansion that was addressed in the general plan and subsequent studies that identified mitigation measure along Tammal Pius, from the northbound off-ramp through to that first access point. So, there is a, an improvement planned at that location that would be funded by growth at the Village Center that would be put in place, and so that's going to add some capacity to that section of Tammal Pius and improve conditions there. Most of the traffic coming to and from the project would be coming off the freeway, about seventy percent of the trips coming off the freeway and going back to the freeway, so it'd be affecting that little segment between One-O-One and Paradise, and coming into the project, and then some looping back around on San Clemente, and some going back up Paradise to that location. So, some of the comments we had were related to the drive-through queue, I think we've covered that pretty well. Volumes on Paradise, Paradise is currently a fairly low-volume street with about twenty-seven-hundred cars a day. It can accommodate more than ten thousand cars a day, so the added trips, we've got substantial capacity on Paradise Drive to accommodate the additional trips that would be resulting from this project. There is a comment about restricting driveways to right-out only. I think the central driveway is restricted to right-out only, but the other two driveways, the northernmost and southernmost, would have, would be able to make left-out in addition to right-out. And we think with the site distance we have from taking some of, a few of those parking spaces away, there's adequate site distance to allow that left turnout, particularly for somebody who's wanting to, to go back, say, towards the Village Center in that area, and doesn't want to circle all the way back, make a right, and go all the way around Paradise to San Clemente. We also have a language, there's a wayfinding sign specifically that, that are integrated as part of the project, that we'd give that information about. If you're going to One-O-One, you would go to the right and circle around and make that movement. And lastly, in terms of on-street parking, there was a comment about removing all the on-street parking. We, we have recommended removal of a few spaces, which is incorporated in the plan, but we don't recommend removing all of the spaces on the frontage of the project. Those spaces are not utilized on the weekend, the perfect opportunity to have that available for overflow parking. We've got good site distance with the, the way the plan is currently designed, so we recommend leaving those remaining on-street parking spaces on the west side, right along the immediate frontage. So, that's a summary, be happy to answer any questions that you have now, or, or later.
I think that we'll hear some more from the consultants, and we'll ask the commissioners for questions after we hear from staff.
And to that point, we also, I just wanted to make sure you're aware as well, we have Peter Brown, Director of Public Works as well, who has been working with, with Doug, Doug and myself as well, to evaluate sort of the conditions out there and address questions you may have. We're going to probably just, unless you want to add to what, yep.
Thanks, Adam. Members of the commission, briefly, just to add to what Bob from Fair and Peers has said, a couple more points for your consideration. You know, typically, in terms of the removing of, of on-street parking, we do that primarily for safety sightlines to accommodate the crosswalk, and I believe that's under the current proposal. I also wanted to update the commission, we, we did a peak hour traffic count just recently, and just to give you an idea of what happens in an hour of time on travel up and down this section of Paradise. Hundred-and-sixty-five trips in an hour, hundred-and-fifty-eight of those were by vehicle, seven were walking, and two were bicycles. So, that'll just give you an idea of the predominant nature of automobile trips in the area, so I just wanted to give that information to you all, and I'll be here if anything else comes up. Thank you all.
All right, before you depart.
Well, you can come back, I think we're going to do, sorry to cut you off, but just to wrap up, and then we'll go to all your questions on anything and everything, and we'll all be available to answer your questions. Yeah, I just want to wrap up by saying there's, you know, there's several options available to you tonight. There's two resolutions, one is for the zoning ordinance amendments, which apply to the C-three district, and the other resolution is for the design review, signed permit, and conditional use permit. The zoning ordinance amendments are included as Exhibit A to Attachment One, and they're shown as, you know, strike-throughs would be things that are eliminated, and the underlying blue text would be what is added. So, that's really the clearest, clearest way that you can see in the staff report was being proposed for the zoning ordinance amendment. And the options available to you tonight, again, this is, this is regarding a recommendation to the town council. So, you know, the commission may wish either approve the resolutions, which would approve, make a recommendation to the town council to approve these as proposed, or suggest modifications, request that the applicant return with further details at a future hearing. Those are, those are kind of the primary options that are under consideration tonight, and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bush. I'm going to ask the commissioners if they have any questions for staff right now, you or the traffic consultants. Charles, nothing to ask these guys, okay. Jennifer?
I just have a general question, just for clarification. Do we need to amend all the zoning, we need to do the amendment to the zoning ordinance in order to allow for a drive-through, right? Because right now, it's only a restaurant that can be a conditional use, so in order to allow for a drive-through, we need to amend the zoning ordinance, is that right?
Yeah, drive-through doesn't exist in any form in the zoning ordinance, so it would need to be added to that table, essentially.
Thank you.
Ms. Metcalfe.
Well, I just had a question about the green roof, and I just want to be sure in the approvals, there is mention made that we want it kept alive and healthy, because nothing looks as bad as a half-dead or dead green roof.
Well, I think we'll have a chance to ask the architect about that, so.
I will ask whomever it takes, that we get something in there. This is a large roof, it's going to be seen from several directions, and I want to be sure it's alive and healthy.
Yeah, so, to your question, landscaped areas that, if they were approved, as part of these plans, are required to be maintained as a condition of approval. There's both a condition of approval specific to the green roof, but there's also a general condition of approval for maintenance of all landscaping.
I just want to be sure the roof is mentioned.
Absolutely.
It is. Dr. Bundy.
Yeah, maybe this is for you, Doug, in regard to the trees that are going to be removed. You mentioned that a number of the eucalyptus were going to be removed for structural reasons, although as I looked at the plans, I thought I understood that the majority of the rather nice, large eucalyptus trees on the property were going to stay if they didn't interfere with the, the new driveway or the building. Is that correct?
So, I'll defer to the applicant to provide a little more clarity on this. Some of the existing eucalyptus would be maintained, and I know that from the applicant's perspective, you know, they approached this from a, how do we, how do we keep as many of these as possible? So, I think the ones that they have selected for removal, I think is primarily structural issues with the, with the trees and the way that they've grown. You're right, that in the Arbus report, the majority of the trees were healthy, really. It was a matter of structural issues that ultimately led to the Arbus recommendation for removal. But I'll, I'll let the applicant speak to that when they have that opportunity.
And probably for Bob and Peter, I thought David McPherson had a good thought from the standpoint of eliminating the central driveway. I think that street, even though the traffic is not that great, the sightlines are not good, and when I'm at Toscaletto Tire, I have to look very carefully coming out from there. And the two businesses directly across the street, which are automotive-related, have very low auto, auto traffic coming in at this point, and that could change at some time, and particularly the one that's directly across the street that has billion-dollar cars coming out to just drive periodically on the street to, to do the testing for whatever they've done. And I think eliminating that would then prevent the elimination of a certain number of parking spaces on the street that a number of the businesses are quite concerned about. I think their general concern is that Amies will be good for the street, good for the location, but they have employees that park on the street and need those parking spaces. So, I'd like to look at eliminating that to preserve some of those parking spaces, maybe widen the northern entrance and exit, and continue with the southern exit as it is. And I, I would really recommend, or think that, could we look at doing just right turn only from all of the exits? The number of people that would be exiting and going to the Village is relatively small, and for safety reasons, exiting to the right and coming back to San Clemente and then to One-O-One would be a safer alternative.
All right, Bob, I'm going to paraphrase if I might. What you're asking then is, can it be eliminated, and what does that impact? And that's a question for the traffic, or Peter Brown, to address, right?
Yes.
And, okay.
Well, these are very thoughtful questions. I'll, I'll turn it over to Bob if he has anything to add when I get done. But I've thought about this, and, and I'll give you my, my initial assessment, so, and I might just use the screen here. So, i- if we were to eliminate one of the driveways, you could gain two to three spaces on-street, you know, at the most. So, in terms of, you know, a safety improvement, I wouldn't rank that as a really high change in terms of improving safety for either vehicular, or even biker-ped traffic moving up and down the corridor. If I were to make a decision myself, without input from the planning commission, the thing that I would look at is also internal circulation in this lot. So, we have to think that if this Amies is anything like the Amies in Rondert Park, it's going to be really busy. And so, both in the drive-through lane and accessing any of these parking spaces, one of the things that happens is, a lot of cars are coming out looking for spaces. If you are backing out here, and you only have one place to go in and out of, internal circulation in the peak hour within the site becomes quite difficult. And so, you have an advantage of coming in and out of two particular places on the site. This is obviously only exit, right? So, that's the drive-through. The comment about right-turn onlys, the majority of traffic will make a right turn, I agree with you. I don't know how many it is, if it's eighty or ninety percent, or seventy percent. I think that it is fair to have signage, either prohibiting left-turn movements in the center driveway case, and certainly directing folks in the north and south driveway, that if they want to go to One-O-One, which more than half the trips will, that they have to make a right turn. Otherwise, you know, they're going around the malls on Redwood Highway, all the way around to get the next, well, I guess, northbound on-ramp only. So, I prefer to handle it from a signage standpoint, as opposed to be completely prohibitive. I think that the people who are making the trip choice should be able to choose for themselves where they want to go, and I don't see a big safety benefit in right-turn-only exiting this, this particular site. And then, the other thing that, that I put in, in terms of consideration, is this rapid flashing beacon, ped-crossing proposal here, that would be somehow part of the project. When that's activated, when people, say, from this particular part of the neighborhood, maybe are walking over to enjoy a future Amies food item, when that's activated, that slows down and calms traffic, and actually provides a lot of quick and easy access on and off the site. So, I, I understand all the comments. I think that if this was in a different location, say, where the ped and bike volumes were really heavy through here, there may be, and maybe the automobile volumes weren't nearly as high on this site, I might be able to be pushed in the direction of closing off one of the driveways. But personally, I don't, I don't think it's necessary or very, very well argued for an improved safety benefit. And Bob, I'll turn it over to you if you want to add anything to that.
I'd like to add some.
I agree with, the only thing I, the only thing I would add is, on this northernmost driveway, the northernmost driveway does have very good site visibility for folks coming southbound and, and northbound, so that the primary reason we thought of the right turn was So that the primary reason we thought of the right turn restriction at the central driveway is that's the one that has probably the, the biggest issue with visibility, even with removing a few parking spaces. So we definitely agree with you on the central driveway in terms of right-out only.
All right. Thank you. Phyllis, you had a question?
Ah, yes, for Peter. I'm sorry. You know, one thing, looking at the traffic study, listening to you, you're talking about the current usage of the street. And I drive that street three or four times a week because I live in Meadow Creek. So that's my access, you know, to get home. This will be a new type of use. You're not going to have a lot of kids. You're not going to have a lot of people riding bikes for pleasure. This is a place where you bring your animal to the vet or get tires for your car or buy paint, et cetera. So I think we have to look at what is going to be, you know, what is going to be in the very near future. I'm not talking about five years down the road. And is it going to be safe with the volume that Amy's has? Because when you drive on that street, it's not people speeding. Those who are driving south after getting off the freeway, they're kind of crawling along and then stopping because they're trying to find the driveway on the east side to turn into to get to whatever business they wish to get to. They're not looking for pedestrians. They're not looking for cyclists. So I'm wondering how are you taking that into consideration? What will happen when Amy's opens rather, you know, we know what's happening now.
Yeah. Chair Chase, Commissioner Metcalf, so, so the thing I would say to that is, you know, Mr. Gandy talked about our, our recent counts out here. So we have 2,700 vehicles a day using this portion of Paradise. Some of you don't, don't know what that feels like or what that looks like. But if you go over to San Clemente, that's 20,000 vehicles a day, right? So it's about a tenth of the volume of the street perpendicular or parallel to it. So it is, is by all standards a low-volume street. So, so in terms of, your question is, is it safe? Is with future, immediate future uses, is it safe? I, I think it is. I think that this use in this location doesn't propose any significant change. And we talked about, if you read the traffic study, I think the number is 170 or 180 peak hour trips. So, you know, if you do the math on what that is in terms of impact for the whole day's worth of traffic, you know, 5%, 10% of the vehicles at the busiest time would be added to that. That, to me, is a palatable amount of change. So, and then to your last point where I may slightly disagree about trip generation rates here. While it is primarily auto-dominated and a lot of people will drive here, some people may choose to bike and walk and they should be accommodated as well. And so that's why the, the additional crosswalk, improvement of the sidewalks. We could even do some kind of Class 3 initial designation through here, share the road type of things. And folks from the neighborhood, up Coke Road, Al Paradise, this may be the closest, best restaurant for them to, you know, bike and walk to as a family. So I guess the short answer is I'm not concerned about, about safety in the near term.
Okay. Phyllis, does that answer your question in some degree?
To some degree. Because I'm concerned, I think it's on all of our minds, bike safety.
Mine as well.
After what has happened recently. Now, when you're talking about there'll be the increase in bikes, there'll be the increase in pedestrians. I want to be sure they're safe.
I do as well. We agree there.
I would say from my position that the traffic study takes that into consideration as a default assumption that they must arrive at to say that it's acceptable, that they have to address that. Is that not fair to say?
Yeah, that was exactly one of the reasons why we wanted to make sure that we were assessing the project's impacts once it's in place.
Bob, you had another question?
Well, the follow-up is exactly how many parking spots are you proposing to remove? And exactly where does the crosswork, crosswalk go? And so as to minimize the number of parking spaces that are actually being removed. I know there's a fire hydrant that's there, there's, so there's an existing red zone. And that crosswalk could be close to that so that it wouldn't take out much in the way of parking.
So Dr. Bundy, as a medical professional, when you're asked exactly what is the chance that I will be healed in five days, you probably don't know, right? So what I'll say as a public works professional is we've done a preliminary assessment. Actually, it was out there with Doug and Adam recently. I know Bob and his team have been out there as well. The short answer is around three or four parking spaces would, would come away, not, not a lot. And, and for me, there's two primary reasons to move on-street parking. One is sightlines so that people can get in and out of the site and not have collision opportunities. And then the other is for ped safety. So when we put in a crosswalk, we do what we call daylighting that's crosswalk. So again, you, you want there to be no cars parked right up against the edge of the crosswalk so that pedestrians can be seen and cross safely. So in terms of the exact location, I'll, I went out there with Doug and Adam and the three of us standing on, walking up and down the street and looking down and seeing cars coming to and fro. I believe that we determined that from a sightline standpoint, by putting the crosswalk here, you achieve two things. You maximize your sightline in this direction as a pedestrian. You do the same in terms of maximizing your sightline here. So you get plenty of time to see if there's a vehicle coming. Of course, the suggestion currently is the rapid flashing beacons so cars see them coming a long way. And you also, by sighting it at this location, not exactly, but likely here, would be access to the site. I saw some preliminary proposals of maybe three crosswalks at different locations. From a safety standpoint, I'd prefer to concentrate all the ped movements in one location that has, number one, the best sightlines, and number two, it happens to access the site most directly.
And, and it, just to elaborate, I think a little bit on the process there as well. So in the draft resolution as well, what we're, is going to be required essentially is that if this goes through the process and gets approved, as part of any submittal to the, for building permit, the applicant would have to also have the plans, the exact location at that point in time of the crosswalk and those other improvements to the public right away along with their plans to be submitted as part of their building permit submittal. So the, the first step there, you know, while they're developing their building permit plans, they're also going to be talking to Peter and his team regarding the public improvements that also will need to be part of this, implemented with this project.
All right, guys. Okay. Charles, you had a question?
Yeah, so I've seen some.
Make sure your mic is on there.
So I read for traffic going out the left-hand side that, you know, basically they would have to exit Paradise and get onto Tam and then do a U-turn if they were to go to the freeway. So it really is about going to the village. But then I've also read stuff from the public comments about future scenarios where there's roundabouts and that kind of thing. So I wanted to ask Peter, is there a future consideration of reworking that Paradise Drive to, you know, street where it interact right by the village to, to allow more traffic options? And therefore, you know, in, in understanding what we're really doing for the long-term of this project and what the left-hand turns might mean, I, I'd just like some clarification about, is that just speculation about what's going to happen there? Is there something actually in the works for that?
If you're speaking specifically about a roundabout at San Clemente and Temple Pius Drive, there's nothing in the works that I know of, and I would probably know about it if there was.
Thank you.
You know, that is a very high-volume intersection. And, you know, there are a lot of benefits of putting in roundabouts. There are other places in town where we may look to assess those. But, but at that particular location, there's nothing that I know of. But perhaps more importantly to think about as a planning commission is that any changes that we may want to make to this site in the future, for example, changing turning movements coming in and out of the driveways, that's easy. That's paint and a new sign. So I wouldn't fret too much if I was a planning commissioner about designing the internal circulation of this site. Because, you know, if there's a problem, we can go out there and change it pretty easily. So that's easy to reverse. And so any of the long-term or even short-term development or changes that happen in this neighborhood, regardless of the zoning districts, I, I feel confident that we can, you know, adapt and accommodate pretty easily at a low cost.
Thank you.
And just to elaborate on that, I mean, if we do, the zoning ordinance for conditional use permits also already does have mechanisms if things are really causing problems with public health, safety and welfare violations. There's ish, real serious issues. The CUPs, because they are CUPs, can come back and be reevaluated by the commission.
There's not only that process, but the town has also got its handle on what's happening out there, right? And with you at the helm of Public Works, what's happening in the neighborhood is really important to everybody or any neighborhood, right? But you're paying attention to this.
That sounds like a rhetorical question.
Yeah, so it is somewhat. But I, and, and at the risk of wandering too far, I think that to Commissioner Lee's comment, we all have some awareness of the fact that the overcrossing might change. There could be a lot of things upcoming in the next couple of years in terms of design of that whole area that none of us know what that will look like. But it could change a number of things. And that's outside the purview of this project, but that is.
Correct.
On the table. So, all right. Thank you. I think it's time to move on to hear from the applicant. Who's going to make the presentation for Amy's?
I was going to suggest to you before the public speaks.
Hi. Thank you for considering our application. I'm Andy Berliner and this is my wife Rachel. We're the founders of Amy's Kitchen. And we're going to give you. I'll give you a brief overview, very brief. So that's Amy and Rachel when Amy was, what, six months old? And then her grandmother and Amy, and that's, there's somebody kissing Rachel. So anyways, the idea for Amy's Kitchen as a business came just a few months before Amy's was born. We realized there are other people like ourselves that wanted organic, natural meals but didn't always have time to cook from scratch. So that's where the idea came from. And the company grew quickly, but for several years, we didn't make any money. But what kept us going was consumer letters, the appreciation and begging us to keep going. You know, we just love your food. And it wasn't long before that, after that, that they started asking for a drive-through, surprisingly enough. They said, you know, we don't want to stop at such and such and such and such. And our kids finish soccer and pick up from school and they want to go to the fast food restaurant. And, you know, we don't want to bring them there. So we didn't listen. I mean, we listened, but we, we said, that's really not going to be very easy to do. But after a while, we finally did it. And they said, can't you just, you know, serve your same meals at a drive-through? And we started and we've been surprised at how successful and well-received it's been. We serve burgers, great lemonade, burritos, pizza, mac and cheese, incredible salads. That one on the right is called a super salad. It's got quinoa, tofu. It's just a phenomenal, a whole meal in itself. And everything that you've, is made at Amy's is made from 100% organic ingredients. The packaging is all completely compostable. We haven't quite figured it out yet, but we had these bins for different things. Now it's just one, one spot for everything, because all the packaging is compostable. Unless you sneak in from another restaurant, then we have a little bin for your stuff. And everything's available vegetarian, vegan and/or gluten-free. And it's just amazing.
Talk about. I'm going to cry. I just think it's very emotional. So what we've had, it's been a wonderful experience because you can come and come to the restaurant. You're a family. One member might not be able to eat wheat. Your child might not be able to eat dairy. And you can go to the restaurant and everyone has something to eat. It's our philosophy is that we try to feed everyone, whatever your dietary restrictions are. So Andy now can talk. Okay. Talk about the girl with the milkshake.
Oh, okay. Well, it's just a joy to see a kid who's never had a milkshake in his life enjoy a milkshake because he's had a dairy allergy. Or see a family thank us.
No, we're, you see, we really care about, we really care about our customers. It's, we're a family business. And what's been the most exciting thing for me about the restaurant is how excited everybody is to come to the restaurant. You see people walking in and the kids are all running. They're so excited. And the parents, they have a big smile on their face or the older people, you know, with their wheel, their walkers. There's something for everyone. There's all kinds of people and people with tattoos and just, you know, everybody. And they love the food. And so we've gotten quite a lot of letters, emails from people all over the country asking for a drive-through in their town. I think every city in the country practically has, somebody has written us. And so we're excited that this is our first venture into trying a new restaurant and to see if this model that's working in Rondert Park can now work somewhere else. And to tell you the truth, when we were just starting to think about the restaurant, we would drive by Denny's and Andy would say to me, oh, God, that is the perfect place for our restaurant. And this was way before we found Rondert Park. And I think we checked into it and then somebody else was, at that point, there was somebody else interested in it. So we said, oh, no, we can't do it there. And, and we kept hoping and then eventually it came through. It opened up that this was available to us and we're thrilled. That's all I can say. And the, and so many emails we've gotten from people, Facebook, that are excited, we're coming to Rondert Park. You know, oh, we can't wait. Oh, Corder Madera. Well, see, that's my switching here.
But anyways, you know, one of the things, everyone that eats at the drive-through, they come away saying, I can't believe what a happy place this is. It's just amazing, you know? But I also have to compliment the commission, the staff. We have built plants in various parts of the country. And you have the most professional staff I've come across. I have to say that. Really, really good. And the interest of the planning commission and of the community in our project has been fantastic. And we appreciate it, whatever the outcome. Yeah, thank you.
Well, you guys are the heart and soul, so now we hear about the architecture.
Hi. Good evening. I'm Paul. I am kind of leading the overall, it's okay, don't worry. Leading the, the project here to try to, you know, kind of work through the process and hopefully find a good home for us here in Corder Madera. I just wanted to cover a couple to sort of broader things about the restaurant, especially things that came up a lot in the community outreach we did. I thought those might be of interest. I know we don't have time to go into everything about our, about our, our restaurant itself. First of all, you know, we're, we're planning to be open from 7:00 AM till 11:00, 11:00 PM, so pretty broad hours. We've had people ask for 24 hours, but we are, you know, right now believe this is the right time to be open. There could be a chance it's 10:30 over the winter months if that fits better. It's a very balanced restaurant. About half the people come in and dine with us. The other half use the drive-through, which is nice. We're not just a drive-through. A lot of people really enjoy the patio space, the, the sense of community inside. As you probably saw in the traffic study, Saturdays are usually our busiest day and typically 12 to 2 and 6 to 8 are what we call our peak periods. And we have a really cool group of people who work for us. I mean, they're restaurant professionals, they're students. We have a lot of kids. It's their first job ever and they're coming and we're, you know, coaching them and helping them with both their life and how to be good employees. And it's just, you know, that, that staff is really who makes us, I think, something special. We invest a lot in our employees, in their training and in their development. And one thing that's also come up, we also have a great commuter benefit program for employees. We do this across the entire company, corporate employees, restaurant employees, plant employees. And we're going to tailor a very specific program for Marin because there's different transit options here than there are in Rondert Park, but just something I wanted to mention. I also, the, the concept of idling came up a lot and sort of the greenhouse gas impact that a drive-through restaurant may have. This is something that we took very seriously. We actually studied and brought an external, he was, he was an external consultant when he did the study. We loved him so much, we hired him. So just in case you meet Renault in the future. But when he did the study for us, he worked for his own consulting firm. And he did an extensive model of what it meant to make an Amy's drive-through meal. And what was really exciting is that we found that an Amy's meal has less than half the carbon gas or greenhouse gas emissions than a traditional restaurant meal. And less than 3% of the emissions associated with that meal are actually idling in the drive-through. And that, that's for cars that even idle. And I know a lot of cars today turn off or hybrids. But for a traditional idling car, it's less than 3% of the meal, which is already less than half of what a normal restaurant. And, and most, most of that is the benefit of our organic and vegetarian supply chain, that we really invest so much in growing things the right way. But we also do a lot on-site like PV panels. We look at energy efficiency in everything that we do. Andy already talked about this, but another thing that we've recently instituted is 100% compostable packaging. This is a very unique thing in, in the restaurant world. It was not easy to get to. We had to buy up to three years of a few different types of packaging in order to convince suppliers to make a compostable version of something that they had never made compostable before. But that's how seriously we take, you know, our environmental commitment and, you know, we don't. we don't want waste to be associated with our concept. We also really thought it was important to get to know the community, so as part of this process, we did two community open houses up at our restaurant in Roanoke Park. We served over 200 people meals at those events, we had our model, our pictures, we answered questions. And it was really just a fabulous way to get to know people who, you know, hopefully will be future customers, but today were helping us inform and, and guide our project in the right way. And we also did a lot of outreach throughout the community here, I met with dozens of individuals one-on-one, as well as we presented to Rotary, Lions, the Chamber of Commerce, the Moms Club, and the Foundation. We actually serve food for the Lions Club, so we try, you know, give them the full experience, both the presentation and an understanding of our menu. And then lastly, we did put up a little page for people who might be interested and who would support us, and we have, as of a couple of days ago, we had 1,150 local community members who actually signed up on the Amy's Drive-Thru webpage to show support for the project, which, you know, was very exciting for us, and kind of humbling to see that there's that many out there who are interested in Amy's coming to Corder Madera. And then there's also a lot of support across Nextdoor, Facebook, and other, other forums as well. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Zoe, who is part of our architectural team, and she'll go a little bit through more details about the actual design for the project.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners, thank you for having us here this evening. I'm Zoe Astron, landscape architect and principal of Interestus Architects, was here back in September when we did the workshop. And I had prepared to explain quite a bit about the design, but Mr. Bush has done such a great job of doing that, that I'll probably skim through several of the slides and just speak to a few highlights. I just wanted to remind of our design intentions when we came here last, which I think are still very valid, and have been sort of validated through the design process over the last several months, and how invaluable the input from planning staff, the commission, the community input, and the members of the Corder Madera community has been to sort of maintaining that course, I just wanted to mention that. Our intent's including creating a restaurant that is well-suited to this unique site, has a character in keeping with the existing charm of the town of Corder Madera, and is a place that the community, that the community people can gather together and enjoy food in a, in inviting and sustainable setting. And so those are priorities that we set months ago, if not a year ago, which we think are fulfilled by the site design and the building design. We spoke already about the site context, taking into account the prevailing winds, the adjacency to 101, the situation along the commercial corridor of Paradise Drive. I just wanted to remind that we took all of these things into account and made what we felt were challenging aspects of the site into assets for Amy's, in fact. Closer here, you see the existing Denny's in pink, again, the, the situation of the site with north to your right, south to your left, and understanding all of those sort of complex and unique things about the site brought us to a diagram, which you'll remember, about where the building should be located, the outdoor seating being protected and sheltered by the building, and the very important landscape buffers that we are creating between the queue and the parking, the visibility of the parking on the north side of the building, creating entry space actually in front of, between the parking and the building, and, and the landscape buffering along Paradise, all critical. And then we've spoken a lot tonight about the circulation, I think I'll actually, this sort of diagrams, and it makes it very clear how important the separation of circulation is, the pink being the queue line, the parking circulation being independent of the queue, and then the gold dots being pedestrian circulation, and how important that they're safe, clear, easily legible as people come to visit Amy's circulation. And the service side of the building is also very clear, that was another big advantage to, to siting the building, not in the middle of the site, but to the south, where the sort of solid blue shows the service deliveries and trash removal that will occur on that, that south side. And then the site plan that you saw earlier, I wanted to point out a couple of things that were responses both to community input, but also the transportation study. We've increased, in fact, the parking spaces for the site, which I think earlier we were at around 40, 42, it's now at a count of 47 spaces in the parking and for employee parking on the south side of the building. The bicycle parking is now at 14, 14 spaces, which are on the Paradise side of the patio, and directly access the patio and an entry to the dining room. And the queue, we've already talked about the 19 queue spaces, including the two sort of waiting spaces, which are, are very important at busy times. I also wanted to mention here, the, you can see the landscape buffering, oh, the existing trees, I wanted to respond to that while I'm here. You'll see here on the plan, the sort of more clear circles near the building, there's four trees on the frontage of Paradise Drive that are existing eucalyptus trees that we are maintaining. There's a total actually of five trees, one in the middle of the street, streetscape-facing trees that we're saving onsite, that are mature eucalyptus, quite tall. And the other, as was referenced earlier, the Arbor's report, there are a total of around 20, I think it's 24, trees onsite. 16 of those were indicated as desirable to remove because of the, the structural integrity of the trees. And then the remaining, I want to say, I think there's really three or four that conflicted with new areas of paving, drivelines, driveways, and the queuing, essentially. So I think we've, we've managed to save what we felt were the most valuable trees to the project, trees that would provide instant shade for the patio area and the building, which I think is very critical. And then we'll be planting, I think it's in the neighborhood of 20 new shade trees around the parking area and along the streetscape and at the ends of the site. Another feature we've touched upon is the fence along the west side of the site, which I think is important to understand that, as also, we're seeing it as an infrastructure for green, that it will have vines planted on the, the queue lane side of the fence. And, and the signage, which, just gonna move into here, which we'll be speaking more in relation to the architecture, but we've made, and this was really based on comments about having the signage feel very integrated to the architecture, and also creating a uniqueness in the signage at the monument sign, which Mr. Bush referred to, the silhouette that we've worked into the major wayfinding monument sign on Paradise. As it relates to the landscape plan, there's very specific information here about species, I won't go into detail unless there's interest, but we are prioritizing native and adapted species, so things that take, that are drought tolerant, but also very concerned that the, the landscape looks lush and green and is well-maintained. And so taking those things into account, as well as having a primary focus on flowering species and their ability to create habitat for birds and insects, beneficial insects and butterflies, so. And then Andrew's gonna be speaking, Andrew Dunbar from our office is gonna be speaking more about the architecture and the finishes and design changes that we've made since you last saw it, but this gives you a sense of the character of the entry and the plantings that are on the green roof and in the foreground around the patio.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, planning commissioners, thank you for having us again. It's been a while since we've been together on our last September visit, and we've made a lot of progress, I think, with the building, which I'd like to share with you tonight. I think, as Zoe mentioned, and she has also stolen some of what I would probably talk about, about the building and its integration of landscape, and with Doug's great presentation, I probably don't have to say as much as I was going to, but what, what was important at the workshop, I think we came away with, was the scale of the building. I mean, the concerns that were mentioned, the living roof, the long roof at that time, and the tower element, the highway facade was of concern. I think we've looked at all these things, the service area, and opportunities for breaking in the mass, the details and articulation of materials of the building, I think we've come a long way with, and how these are informed by the site and the floodplain considerations that are specific to this project. So I'm gonna walk you through some of those, and what we've done through the planning sessions, which were really very useful. We got a lot of feedback that was really important, a lot of input, it helped us form a much better context for the site and a better fit for this unique site and with a unique placemaking that we can do on this site. So we're looking, gonna, and you'll notice that we've articulated the building, we've got a hierarchy of massing now, and I'm gonna just go through where those are, but I think they're evident from the slides that we've seen or will see. A stepping down of the volumes from the more prominent roof, the green roof over the major sort of large space of the dining room, and then down in stepping in scale to more pedestrian-oriented elements that are in the back, the smaller building stepping out into the south, and also then the pergola, pergola structure that allows the post and beam extended structure to be expressed, but also to sort of meld with the landscape. And we get the building and the landscape working very synergistically together. And I'll get into that more on the sustainability side, where really they work as a system. So in my second slide, I'll start with the view from the freeway. The approach here is from south, heading north on 101, and we see the differentiated roof volumes, which tells a much clearer story now, responding, I think, to the, the building's functions, as we step up in volume from the small enclosure to the kitchen, which has the screening, the mechanical screening has now been integrated as a separate sort of roof-like structure. It's an open screen that allows the mechanical to be there without being noticed. And then the larger roof, which begins to protect the building, has deeper eaves, crass shadow, and a much more textured articulation of the facade on this side. And then that's punctuated by a large dormer, which gives us a much stronger frontal presentation towards the west, and towards, of course, Mount Tam, and towards the town center. The next view is on 101, heading south. And again, now you can see the smaller building, which is a lot lower than we first came to, is also much more nestled into the landscape, and that's through the help of saving the very mature trees that we were really prioritizing, saving those, because they're, they're take a very long time to grow that large, and we, we want to protect them. They also give enormous scale to the building and gives us a sense of it belonging to the landscape. The strong prominence here of the green roof and the building, you can see the edge fence, which is a slatted wood-like looking fence, it is actually a very durable material, and we'll get into the materials a little more, but it allows us to separate the driveline queue lights from the freeway, and also buffets, helps buffet noise and wind at that lower level. As we come around and we get onto Paradise Drive, I'm just gonna bring you through this view, heading south here, we can see the landscaping and the trees, a much more articulated facade up ahead of the entrance and the garden coming up on your right, the monument sign you can see as we approach, which announces the main entry, and how the landscape terraces. A view just going a little further up the street, we're now centered on what will be probably the pedestrian crosswalk will be in this area, this is also the best place to approach the building. It's where we have the most pedestrian-scale environment, the bicycles are well-accommodated here, and it's the entry to the garden patio, which then provides you a direct access into the main dining room. And then coming from the other way on Paradise Drive, this is the, the south side of the building, this is where we can actually grow vines in the building, we have exposure to the sun, this is the lowest stepping of the volumes of the building, but also we can collect PV here on the shelter, and also the large trees provide a lot of context and kind of give us a shaded more, more of an environment of enclosure. From the main entry, this is a view walking directly towards the, you see the sort of express structure of the building, gives it a lot of depth, a lot of filigree, layering, shadows, which play across the day, the time of the day. You can see how that extension of that structural exposure is also, allows us to glaze the building on this side, but also gives us an extension into the landscape of the continued pergola elements, which also, as we said, have louvered shades, which can completely open to the sun, shade down at any level, but also can protect from rain on the winter months. And then stepping back to look at the materials, we've really been looking for an earth-tone materiality to the building, a lot of very durable, sort of weathered, materials that will weather very well over time and are, take part in a sort of continuum with the landscape, is also, as well as being very durable. We have details here of board and bat stains that we're gonna be using, and colors that are sort of muted in tones and earth-like blending in. We also managed to work with that in the standing seam roofs, which form an infrastructure for a lot of sustainability features, including the green roof. So I'm gonna just zoom in on the sustainability features in the corner, which are a lot of what, how the overall system works, both in building and in landscape, as a kind of a unified approach. We see here, the system working together, it's really, the idea of taking not only the product and the packaging and the compostable, but also that same thing working into renewable energy generation onsite, to electrical vehicle charging, which you see there. The water is a large element, both from stormwater treatment to best practices, and also being able to protect using the green roof to mitigate heat and providing both habitat, but also mitigating heat island effects, and really increasing the energy consumption of the building, and those are all reflected in a sort of sustained commitment to making a better place that makes places better. So I'm gonna just move from that to questions and comments. We did, of course, I don't have to do that much work, because there is a model here that I welcome anyone to come up and take a look at. There's also a detailed study model that was done earlier in the project as we developed it, and the final sort of site model, which shows you the context of the trees and the scale of the trees that will grow in, probably about 10 years from now, those are the more mature trees, they won't be planted that big, but that, they will catch up on the larger eucalyptus that aren't there on site. Thank you.
Thank you. We are passing around up here, material boards from the project, and they show in pretty good detail what all of these things are. I think that they can be looked at by the public at any time. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the architects at this point? I'll start with Charles, see if you have anything you want to ask these guys right now.
Yeah, so I have very specific questions that aren't, so with outdoor patio, is there plans to put heaters in it? Okay. And then also, will you have some kind of vertical wind shade in certain conditions where you could pull down on the side so that you could kind of semi-enclose it from the wind? I know you looked at the prevailing winds and the building blocks the majority of that, but on other projects, I think there's been a little talk of it.
So- I'll just take that, because we have a lot of experience with wind in our patio in our Roanoke Park, and I think unfortunately, when we built that, we didn't take nearly the same cares we have with this site in terms of understanding prevailing winds and what the impact is. So, you know, we believe that the shielding of the building will do the majority of the work, but if for some reason we're still finding between that and the heaters that it's a bit uncomfortable, we are looking at a really nice kind of, sort of like a canvas, almost like a pull-down sort of thing that could, you know, kind of on a section-by-section basis, prevent the wind from, from bothering our guests, but it is something that's very important to us, and we are, we feel very confident this design will do a much better job than what we've done in the past.
Great, thank you.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
All right, Jennifer, do you have something you want to ask?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Okay, Phyllis.
No questions at this time, I'm just very pleased you got rid of the water tower. It's not the 1930's Dust Bowl look, I'm glad it's gone.
All right, Dr. Bundy.
Yeah, for Zoe, the trees that are along the freeway on the other side of the existing chain-link fence, that's Caltrans, and that, those will stay, right? And have you thought about sort of maintaining some of the smaller eucalyptus trees that are multi-trunked, to trim those, to provide something that looks a little more mature than just, you know, what's gonna go immediately in?
Right. The, the trees on the other side of the Caltrans separation there are, are to be maintained, and there are a number of trees, I think there's at least three or four that are on the southern portion of the site, which is the easement for the existing pumping station. So there are some trees there that are big, mature trees that are to be maintained. Some, we have looked at some of the smaller ones with hopes of being able to save them, but as I mentioned, the queuing, the, the queuing zone and the narrowness of our site precluded us maintaining those trees. So it is, has been narrowed down to those five mature trees, and we wanted to bias saving those on the Paradise side of the site, and the unfortunate loss is the smaller trees on the west side of the site. trees on the west side of the site.
Okay. All right, we reserve the right to come back with questions, but I do have one question for, regarding the Ronard Park facility. Do you guys take call-in orders, or is that going to be something you're going to do at this site? You know?
We don't formally take call-in orders today, though we do do it for special events, large groups or parties, and if we're not very busy. But we are working on some new ways in which to do that better, so that could be potentially ordering off like a mobile app or online. So it is something that we'd like to do. Our drive-through is really quick, it's about five minutes to get your food, and so we feel for most people, it's fast enough that the call-in doesn't need to be part of it. But it is something we're considering, but we're not fully doing yet.
So I bring it up because it might change the traffic flow or how people park, or what they need, or what the site needs at some point. Do you have any idea what percentage of the site power requirements the solar will satisfy?
I don't have that right off, no.
And per Commissioner Metcalfe, this roof will be watered year-round?
Yes, it will. And we've, again, learned a lot in operating our first living roof, and this one will be done much better. I think the big thing that we've learned is a lot about the control systems that go into irrigation, and we're going to do a completely upgraded, more sophisticated control system this time around, which is something that we learned in our first go-around. We also have a contract with a company called Symbios, and they're actually kind of a leading expert on living roofs, and they will have a person, I believe it's every two weeks, they have a gardener that goes up, straps themselves in with a harness and actually tends to the plants and...
Yeah, I have some pictures for you, I'll show you. We're going in and replacing all the plants that have died back because of the rains this year, and it's so beautiful, and the flowers, it's just exquisite to see our green roof. We really care about it, we're not going to let it go. You know, it's like beautiful.
Well, it's a concern of mine because we have approved them in the past, and then a year later, we, we see whether these happen to have been residential, that they were dead, or mostly dead.
Yeah, we're three years, we're three years, and it's more beautiful than when we first planted it, so we hope to...
Glad to hear that.
We plan on it, so...
All right, we've exhausted a certain number of questions, but we have a lot of people that would probably like to say some great things. So I would like to get into the public comment now. I have a timer here that says three minutes, and it'll beep and make nasty noises, so if you would limit it to that, I dearly ask you to do so, otherwise we'll have to interrupt you. So please get up and if you are able, state your name and tell us your thoughts about the project, please. And let's keep a line going here so that we don't have a dearth of dead airspace.
Is it possible to bring up the aerial view of the parking lot in Paradise Drive?
We'll have to see.
Okay. So David McPherson, resident of Corder Madera for 27 years. My comments are, as a private citizen, but are informed by the last six years as vice-chair of the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. First and foremost, my family is a fan, we hope that you approve it. Previously, I had written Public Works and the Commission to talk about two concerns. The first was the elimination of the middle driveway. From a bike-ped situation, anytime you have too many driveways, multiple driveways, duplicative driveways, you end up with the possibility of conflict with bicycles and pedestrians as well as other motor vehicles. But I am going to withdraw that concern. I think that both Peter with Public Works and the Traffic Consultant have thought enough about the traffic circulation problem and the danger that that creates, and I think that it will work acceptably with the three driveways. The other concern I had, and I wanted to be not short-sighted, I'm, you know, cautiously optimistic, that the Corder Madera Community Connector, which is a bicycle pedestrian designed by Skidmore, Owens, and Merrill, that's under consideration by Caltrans, will connect the town center with the village and the east and the west side of Corder Madera. And in fact, you know, if that happens, I think we're going to increase the ability to access our two shopping malls and Amy's by people walking and people on bikes to a much greater sense than we have now with the very low numbers. So with that in mind, I looked at Paradise Drive, and it's just under a mile, it's 2,866 feet. And there are 11 parking spaces only on the west side of Paradise. And the applicant is proposing removing four of those spaces, so that leaves about seven. So from my perspective, I thought, well, let's remove all those spaces and re-stripe Paradise Drive so that there is a Class II bike lane all the way from San Clemente to Tamalpais. And I still think that that is, should be the future, but for purposes of approving tonight, if that's the way this goes, I think what I'm comfortable saying is that it can wait. The condition of Paradise Drive is rough, but it's not rough enough so that the Public Works would consider grinding and repaving. And so hopefully that will queue itself up in a couple of years, and that'll give empirical data as to whether or not those seven spaces are really necessary. If they're not necessary, if they're being used sporadically, and if they're, when they're being used, there's plenty of space in the parking lot, then Public Works and the Town Council, the Planning Commission, whoever needs to make that decision can work with Amy's and say, listen, let's get rid of those seven spaces, let's re-stripe and repave Paradise Drive, and let's include a Class II bike lane, which I think would be great for Amy's, not only for the safety of getting bikes to their restaurant, but also then it would eliminate parking that's directly outside of their outdoor dining, which, you know, I think is an improved aesthetic. So that's it, I want to remove those two conditions that I had earlier proposed, and I encourage you to approve the project.
Thank you.
Commissioners, my name is Phyllis Galanis. I live on the east side and work on the west side. I am very happy to see the new design. I think that it really is going to be, it will fit in with us, whereas I didn't think the other one would. I am glad, Bob, to hear you talk about the people who already have businesses there and how their people, their employees use those parking places and how they are needed for them. So I'm hoping that they will continue to have parking places for their employees. And the other thing, I was concerned about our, one, approving a drive-through, and would that leave the town vulnerable to other restaurants coming in and wanting to have drive-through also? You seem to be considering that with the C3, and it looks like you can pretty much control that. But I did want to bring that up as a concern, since we have never, as you know, allowed a drive-through or a drive-in in our town in its past. I do support Amy's, I think it will be a great addition, so I hope that you can approve what Rachel and her husband have brought before us.
Thank you.
I'm Katie Shell, and I'm 13 years old, and I support Amy's, first of all, because I've been vegetarian for about two years now, and it's really hard to find good vegetarian food around here, especially going, going out to eat, because there's a lot of restaurants that don't even have vegetarian meals on the menu, and so that's hard when I'm going out with friends or meeting up with other families. And it also will be a pretty valuable addition to our town. And in addition, it can help stop global warming because cows emit methane and other greenhouse gases, and so by eliminating more red meat and adding more vegetarian restaurants, we can help stop global warming. And so while it will be a valuable addition to, to our town, it will also help save the planet. Thank you.
My name is Dr. Richard Vogel. I'm a psychologist, I specialize in family therapy, couples therapy, men's work, and addictions. And yeah, okay, yeah. It's ironic that this young lady would be speaking before me, because my real consideration here is that what's become trendy, and I think we're at a tipping point culturally, is the impact and import of the lacto-vegetarian diet. When I say trendy, I mean that teenagers and adolescents, just like this young lady, collectively are becoming aware of the import of taking good care of themselves. The corollary to that is the drug problem we have in Marin. I have my finger on the pulse of it, I'm saddened by it, and it's immense and getting worse. It's not getting better. It'll be worthwhile to have a corollary to the acting out on the part of our adolescents and others who are using substances for the wrong reasons, including families. It was alluded to here about public health and safety. If we're looking at it from an eco-psychological point of view, which is what my orientation is as a therapist, then what we're looking at is what is really going to be conducive to circulation, the term came up of circulation, from the inside out, not just on the property itself, and good health and mental health. There's a proliferation, for example, of celiac disease, Lyme disease, and as a family therapist, there's always a psychological component to that in the family dynamic. So the opportunity here is to have something of a higher value. In Orvadic medicine, Indian medicine, they talk about fire, air, water, and ether. Fire being like a chili, water being watermelon, it's part of their medicinal treatment. And the ether element is atmosphere. The atmosphere at Amy's is conducive to joy and it's uplifting. And this is exactly, at this point in time, that's required, to my way of thinking, in the dynamic of family and what the boredom that ostensibly leads to the use of substances that have gone from marijuana and alcohol now, unfortunately, to cocaine and other more potent substances. I'm saddened by this as a therapist, as a person, as a citizen. That's the addition that will occur with Amy's that will be uplifting, it always is.
Thank you, Richard.
Good evening. My name is Dr. A.J. Callit. I work at VCA Madera Pet Hospital, I'm a partner in that office. We share the driveway with Tuscaloosa Tire. My main concerns, we're happy to have Amy's here, it's going to be a great addition, my main concerns are about the traffic flow on Paradise Drive. It's very difficult to make a right turn if you want to get onto the North Brown Freeway because you have to go then up toward the village, go across traffic, go up, and then make that U-turn. So most of our cars turn left to go around San Clemente and stay with the traffic lights. That's a very difficult left turn as it is now, and it's going to be a more difficult left turn as more cars are going south on Paradise Drive. If there were any way to make Paradise Drive a one-way street, either north or south, that I think would improve all of our concerns about turning left or turning right. The parking, I am one of those people that park on the west side of the street every morning, so underneath those eucalyptus trees, you'll always find my car. And I would really hate to lose any of those parking places in that our employees really rely on those parking places. We try to keep as many spaces as available in our office parking lot for clients and try to have employees park in this, in the street as much as possible. If there's going to be left turn into the parking lot going north on Paradise Drive, that also, if there's going to be a lot of traffic congestion, is going to slow down the traffic on Paradise Drive. So even if our clients decide to turn right, or anybody turning north, if there's people waiting to turn left into Amy's, there's no way to make, go around, you have to wait for that congestion to clear if that potentially is going to be a problem. So the traffic flow is our main concern. Turning left is difficult, turning right's going to be difficult, I think there's a lot of traffic issues. If we could make Paradise Drive one-way, either direction, I think that would help a lot. Please try not to eliminate as many spaces as possible to allow as much of our employee and client parking as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Ned DiAngelo, I'm a Corder Madera resident and sworn Amy's supporter. I don't know if everybody in this room have been to the, the Ronard Park location, but if you've ever been there, you know what kind of restaurant it is, you know what the experience is like. It's like nothing else that I've been, been to in a very long time. People come, who come and visit us, ask us to take them to Ronard, Ronard Park to go to the Amy's restaurant. It's, it's that appealing to people from all over the country who come and visit us. I think that in Corder Madera, if you look at the site now, this is a miracle. I mean, it's, it's a blighted, beat-up old Denny's, and to see what they're showing here as far as the architecture and the environment and the, just everything about it, it will add so much character to that, to that whole area and rejuvenate it. There's no reason to walk over there. That's why people don't walk over there, there's no reason to go, unless you're going to test one of those million-dollar cars, I suppose. But, you know, this type of, this type of treatment of the environment and this, this type of building, the food, the type of people that it draws, you, I will ride my bike there, I won't drive there. I think a lot of people who eat Amy's food will opt to do that. There's parking for bikes, and again, if you haven't been to the Ronard Park location, I strongly recommend you go there because it does, it stands out in that location. You look around and there's a lot of cement, there's a lot of very large corporate buildings, and then there's this little oasis, and it, it really is something. We drive up there once a month just to eat there, and it, it really is, I think it's a real opportunity for the town of Corder Madera to, to bring in a, an asset that represents the future as far as health. It's a statement about us supporting local California businesses, and it's a statement about just the, the way the, the living roof and everything else is laid out. It just really has, to me, it really represents Marin and Sonoma County in, in a way that very few other corporate enterprises do. So thank you, and I hope you do support the development of the site.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Daniel Kohn, I've been a resident of Marin for 20 years and only had the pleasure of being in Corder Madera for the last one year. I'm a rabbi, a Jewish educator, and an instructional designer, and I wanted to say I'm a big proponent and fan, especially because I keep kosher, and every, the kind of food that you provide is completely in alignment with our family's dietary guidelines. And also I have three teenagers at Hall and at Redwood High School, and I've always been wanting to have a really healthy alternative for them, to be able to nag them to go where they want to go out and have some food. So thank you so much, and I hope you do support this.
Thank you.
I'm Eliana Brown, and my husband and I drive up to Amy's from El Valley every weekend that we're in town, so we're there for, for weekends a month. We love it there, and the reason is because I have celiac and I can't have any dairy, so I'm also vegan, and it's the only restaurant that I can actually eat at without having to worry about getting sick. Even though Marin considers itself to be very healthy, actually it isn't. It talks about it, but it doesn't actually do it. So we look at them, they have such a big heart, they give so much to the community. Let's welcome them with love and just give them everything they need. So thank you.
Hi, my, my name is Carol Michelson, and I've...
Hi, my name is Carol Michelson, and I've been a resident of Marin for the past 25 years. I lived in Corde Madera, and I raised three children here. I'm a music teacher, and I am a food activist, I guess you would say. And I really believe that food is so important and how we cultivate the community with food and how we also cultivate health, and it's so important for brains, you know, of eating the right things and to eat organic. And where can you go where you will find all organic food? I mean, where can you go out here? I'm always looking to find a place. I'm calling up, "Do you use all organic food?" "We'll use some locally sourced organic food." I mean, you can go to Good Earth. It's true, but that's, you know, this is an incredible restaurant. Can you get a burger at Good Earth that will have all the good things in it? Gluten-free, you can choose gluten-free and vegan. I know I'm preaching to the choir. I know you've done your research, but this place is incredible. I mean, I wish, I so, I hope that you have it here because it's hard to get up to Ronert Park, but I would go every day. If it's here, I personally will go every time I go to Corde Madera because I love it so much. And it's so important that we feed each other, our children, the community, you know, really healthy food, and that also they're not contributing to waste environment and composting. And everything they're doing is forward-thinking and revolutionary, and we should give them our town, our Marin. We'd be so excited. So please do. Allow them to move here with us.
Thank you.
Hi, I am Sarah Buck. I am actually a board member of our Corde Madera Larkspur Moms Club. We have about 175 moms in our club. I also have three kids, so I'm here as a mom as well, and just want to support them. You know, we really feel like it takes a village to raise these kids, and we would love for Amy's to be part of our village to help with the convenience and health of feeding our kids. If I have to feed my kids one more microwaveable Kraft macaroni and cheese, I'll feel really, really bad. I already have a lot of mom guilt. So we're just in support of that, and a lot of moms in the area are too. So I just want to say that.
Thank you.
I guess everybody almost stopped short of calling it Narnia, but I'm happy that, you know, and I would really like to welcome Amy's as well. I did have apprehensions in the last meeting, which I clearly stated regarding the idling and the traffic problems. One gentleman really stated the traffic issues very well, so I'm not going to go over it again. My other concern is about the eucalyptus trees. Now, we will have a heater. We will have a kitchen, so there will be elements of fire, and eucalyptus is probably one of the worst trees out there to lead into a fire hazard. And we sort of live in an area where, you know, fire is probably not unheard of, and I think we should probably pay more attention to that detail of leaving those four big eucalyptus trees around. I'm sure you guys are brave, you know, thinking that you can still sustain those four big trees and nothing bad will happen, but you never know. And last but not least, I withdraw any apprehensions I probably had last time. I would really love to welcome you as well, not on behalf of Marin, but Corde Madera, because I guess people who live in the immediate vicinity sort, you know, seem to have a bit more say in that, and I guess people who will be living nearby might face some challenges. You never know, but again, the way I see it, this is probably the best we can get in that, you know, small spot, and we probably shouldn't, you know, play the gamble too long. Thank you.
Anybody else going to come up and say any more supportive words of the project here? All right, there's a couple of questions we certainly have for staff or that staff might clarify for us. I took a note on a couple of things, and to clarify, Phyllis Colanis's comment about how the conditional use permit or the zoning will, what the process will be for the town to address any other drive-in applications?
So I think Doug did go through the proposed ordinance amendment, and the basic premise here is adding that particular use, the drive, the restaurant with drive-through to this, as a conditional use permit through the C3 zoning district. I think, however, we also included intentionally supplementary conditions or development standards, which would be required for any new use. I would note the definition also puts in place a minimum size of an actual restaurant, so it's not something like a kiosk that is just a drive-through. So there's minimum standards, I think, of about, hopefully I get this right, about 1,000 square feet of interior space and 40 interior seats, so you actually get a restaurant. And then furthermore, there's supplementary findings, several of them that we think really get at a number of the potential, any potential concerns or land use issues that might arise from this particular use. And with that, we've looked at other properties in the other areas that are located in C3 zones. In particular, and Doug pointed this out in the presentation, I think, we wanted to include a finding that talked to the idea and some of the concerns we heard back in September about potential traffic impacts in residential neighborhoods. A lot of those other sites, particularly on Casa Buena in that area. When you look at the requirements for separated drive-through lane, adequate queuing, and a site that could accommodate that, you're looking at likely, in all likelihood, drawing, having problems meeting some of those findings that we actually prepared. And, you know, that was, we wanted to approach it, though, from a land use perspective and really think about how you might address this use rather than sort of come at it from another approach that might just sort of say singularly, this is only appropriate in one particular location. The C3 zone, there's a reason why, I think Doug spent a lot of time in the presentation going through some of the uses that are allowed, such as car washes already in those areas. And I think we feel we put in place a lot of good quality findings that would enable a real thorough analysis by staff, planning commission, to evaluate whether or not another particular location is appropriate for this use. So it's a long explanation, but I think there's a lot of thought that went into that. Doug, you know, go ahead and...
Yeah, just to add on to that, I think, you know, there's a lot that's already within the zoning ordinance without these proposed kind of supplemental findings and supplemental standards that already reserve a significant amount of discretion for applications like this and impose a number of standards, whether that's setbacks from residential areas, you know, rules about lighting, glare, noise, these sorts of things. They're in there, but by going above and beyond here, we've set a very high standard for any potential application with, you know, with using this as a great example of, you know, when you set the bar in the right place and you consider the right things, you can get a great project like this, so.
That's good explanation. I think it's really important to understand the process that anybody might endeavor to go through. This is a unique property. Was there anything else that you guys took note of that you'd want to address in any of the public comments or any of the other issues?
Well, I do think we've heard some comments about parking, on-street parking being important and valuable. I would note those are public parking spaces as properties get developed. Each property is really, has their own parking requirements to handle, supposed to be able to handle not only visitors and customers, but also employees. That's what the parking standards are for. Obviously, at times, there may be a need, if there is supplemental spaces, that's what the on-street parking is for. I think we all recognize the, ideally, you'd keep as many as possible, but at the same time, really, safety, and we've heard that tonight, is paramount, and some may need to be removed for site distance issues, and those things will be evaluated. One thing we did discuss with Peter when we were here, sorry, when we were out on the site, was perhaps there's a way to get a few more spaces in if we actually got rid of the markings that are on there that designate actual spaces, which may allow for more spaces there, you know, and some of the actual, there's some driveways that exist right now, for example, on the north part of the site, that would be actually new curb, which would allow for a couple additional new on-street parking spaces on the northern portion of the western side of the street. So I understand the concern, but I think, you know, it's, those are things that obviously will have to be addressed to the greatest extent we can, will keep as many as we possibly can, but at the same time, some, I think we expect a few will have to be removed.
Okay. And the one-way traffic suggestion may be evaluated based on conditions down the road. It may turn out that that is necessary. It may not turn out to be necessary.
Absolutely. I mean, this is a, this is a dynamic system, the traffic network, and is always being constantly looked at and evaluated. And at this time, as you've heard tonight, staff feels, from Public Works Department, from Planning Department, from our consultants, feels this is an appropriate design for this area.
Okay. Does anyone else have any other questions for staff or for the applicant right now? No? Okay, well, then, is there any member of the public that wants to say anything else at this point? Please step up and...
Yes, my name is Vicki Torto, and I've lived in Marin for about 30 years now. And I just want to say I'm very happy about the restaurant going in. I hope it does because for many years, well, I go out with a group of vegans, and we never know where to eat in Marin. It's kind of like a plant-based food desert here. The other thing I wanted to say, it's a little unrelated, but Dr. Callit, I recognized, he saved my dog's life eight years ago, and so treat him good. Yes.
All right, thank you.
That's my...
All right, so with that said, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Any other questions, if you wanted? I don't know if...
I don't, I...
Didn't have...
No, yeah, they didn't, so we're...
May we take a five-minute break, please?
Sure, we can take a five-minute break.
Thank you.
You want to close the public...
Yeah, I'm closing the public hearing.
Sorry.
I guess it's just so long.
All right, so we'll be back here in five minutes, and I mean it, five minutes. We want to get through this, so. Okay, thank you all for being patient and getting us to this point in the process. It's time for us to review the project up here, talk amongst ourselves, and put out thoughts for consideration or discussion or deliberation or things that need to be reviewed. So I'm going to start with Mr. Lee. I don't know if you have, I haven't heard much from the commissioners here, so it may be very simple or it may not, so...
Okay. I think, like we've all acknowledged, you know, really, it's the zoning that has in the past been a consideration and where we asked staff to basically come with really good analysis and kind of direction on how to address that if this applicant was given permission to do that in the community. And I think after reading the documents, I feel like there's a lot of really good support for it. I think a lot of the discussion that I've heard imagines that this, there's a fear that this, that Amy's will go away in five or 10 years and we'll get stuck with this property that becomes something else. But Denny's was there for 50 years, and I honestly think this is a better, longer-term, you know, restaurant. So, you know, I don't know, I don't think we're really going to be reconsidering what this property is in our lifetime. So in that instance, I'm not afraid of making a decision on that, but I also respect that we want to protect ourselves and the community, and I feel like those protections are there in the way that we understood the zoning and the kind of ways that we would want to see this use enabled in our town. And so, you know, I've read thoroughly the findings, and I really feel like I can make them wholeheartedly, and so that's why, I guess, I don't have, I just need to describe where I come from and what I've asked for and what I've seen, and I don't really have any more comment than that.
All right, well, that's well said and thoughtful. I think it's a great staff report. Jennifer?
Yes, I have, I think, several...
Nope.
Can you hear me? Yes. As I said, I think Doug and staff did a great job on the report, and so I think a lot of thought went into the C3 zoning and how if we did allow for Amy's under a conditional use permit, how that might impact future sites, which obviously has been the concern, that we don't want to be a town with 10 drive-throughs. And I think, as you guys have clearly pointed out, there are not many sites that would even allow for drive-throughs by zoning. And then with the addition of some of these design elements, such as, you know, the five-foot barrier with the, between the queue lane and the parking fields, as well as the language around the design elements themselves and making sure that it's not a substantially similar design to other restaurants, I think will protect the town from that. I also think the fact that it is a conditional use means that there would always be a lot of scrutiny in front of the planning commission as to any future site that might come up for redevelopment, that we could consider another drive-through, but I see that as unlikely. And I understand people are always concerned about what happens if Amy's goes away, and, you know, we don't want it to become McDonald's, for lack of a better example. But you know what? That's the reality that we live in. It's an uncertain world, and I think that this is a great project. I think we've heard a lot of support from folks both who live here and live in Marin and live farther away, and so I think it's a great project, and I'm very, very supportive of making the findings related to the conditional use and the zoning amendment.
Any other comments? No?
I like it.
Okay.
I think the only other comment I'll make as it relates to the traffic, in my experience on Paradise, and I drive up and down the Tama Pias to San Clemente, thank you, multiple times a day because my daughter goes to school on the east side and I live on the west side. And that street, to me, is very underutilized, and so while I think, yes, there will be additional traffic, given additional trips, I think that the parking consultant has done a really good job of thinking through the best way to accommodate for that. I'm definitely in agreement that eliminating the middle driveway is not a good idea, and I think that in the future, should things change, should we add a bike lane, that we can accommodate for that in the future. I mean, I guess the only other thing I would say is, you know, I don't think we'd want to go the route of additional calming, traffic calming devices, such as like a speed bump or something like that, southbound, but it's something that maybe the town or the Public Works might consider if that became necessary to slow people down.
Right on. Thank you. Dr. Bundy?
Oh, yeah, I think Doug and the staff have done a great job of crafting everything, and the presentations were really first-rate from Amy's. I do have the concerns about the street parking and preserving as much as possible. Turning out of the Toscalopa Tire Shop and common driveway with the veterinary hospital is precarious, and I don't know if something could... if something had been done to help with that in regard to sightlines. I would hope, and I will just, I guess, throw this to Peter and Doug and Paul, to try to figure out the best way to put a crosswalk in without taking out more spaces than necessary, and then looking to create additional parking spaces as possible. I wondered if moving the fire hydrant at the north end of the area to the north side of the new driveway could also free up a new parking space, although I don't know what the cost would be involved in doing something like that. But I'm gonna depend on you and Peter and Paul to try to look at that. It is very important for a lot of the businesses, and the crosswalk, of course, is important to them, too, because a lot of their employees are gonna be going to Amy's. People will be walking down from RH to go to Amy's. But it's a great project.
Thank you, Bob. All right. Ms. Metcalf?
I could go along with the findings. I think the zoning ordinance amendment does take care of, and the conditional use permit takes care of, any concerns we have about there being a plethora of drive-throughs or drive-ins. I'm not sure I even know what the difference is, because we allow Amy's. I hope we'll keep an eye on the traffic situation, especially when there are more cyclists than pedestrians. Maybe the staff could take a look at it in six months after it opened, see what's happening. I have one comment to make, which is, we're talking about saving the environment and doing all these wonderful things. Did you really have to use this much paper to give us plans? I mean, this...
That was what we were asked.
I've been on, let's see, I'm the longest-serving person on this commission, which is probably six or seven years now, and I have never seen a set of plans this large before. I think we could try to cut back on the paper in the future. Other than that, no, I think this is, it's, the site is right, and I like the new design. I'm glad you got rid of the water tower, and I can approve this.
Thank you, Phyllis. You know, I think that I have no problem with the findings, and I think that the staff report guided us through...
Excellent.
...the findings explicitly well, and that it's one of the best staff reports dealing with a potentially thorny issue here that could throw the town at some risk. But I think you wrote it so well and addressed the issues so well, particularly with the zoning change. So, I wholeheartedly will make all of the findings for each of these things. I was concerned about the signage on the highway sign, and then as I sat here and looked at the models, I realized the scale of the sign relative to the site and so forth...
Works.
Really shows why the signs are the size they are. But I think that we have to make sure they follow what's in the conditions of approval, and it turns off at eleven when they shut down. That's an important issue. It's kind of a great relief to have this project proposed for Corte Madera. I think we would all agree to that, that it's a project that brings an aesthetic and an element that, if we could find a way to encourage applications like this, if there was some format, it would be great. There are so many things included in this application that I wish we could find a way to standardize them, you know, that green roofs, good planting, design, good presentation, all of these things. You know, if we could get them to be the norm or find a way to regulate...
Smaller paper, though.
Smaller site, thank you.
Not half-sized plan.
But the, it's, it's, it just so happens that this spot is perfect. I think we all agree that it might not happen anywhere else in town. And so, it's fortuitous, or, in other words, to go along with it, that it happens there. And I think that the presentation was exceptional in this heavy set of plans. I'm going to keep it as an example to show other people about what a project should look like when you bring it before the commission, or you bring it to the Planning Department. It should look like this. It should have all of this stuff laid out. And I've put a lot of that, and the responsibility for that, to the Planning Department, because they probably gave you guys a hard time. So, I think that they steered it in this direction, and you guys were receptive to it, and you created something really great. So, we're all in for it. But I think, for the record, if we could figure out how to make projects this green, and people applied this thoughtfulness to it, we'd end up with more of this in the town than just this one location. So, I think it's great that we can stand for this and get behind you guys. So with that said, we have to make a series of motions with this tonight?
I think it's covered in one. Isn't it one?
Attachment one.
We have just one motion to make, or?
Yeah, it's...
There's two resolutions, but you can do one, as long as you...
Do we just draft Resolution 18006?
So as long as, if, if the motion were to reference both of the resolutions and the findings in both of the resolutions, and you want to combine it, that would be fine.
Is one behind the other? Yes.
One motion for the two resolutions. Okay.
Okay.
Are you gonna do it, Jennifer?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion in the consideration and possible recommendation to the Corte Madera Town Council regarding approval of a zoning ordinance amendment regarding a restaurant with drive-through use in the C3 zone, which is Resolution Number 18006, as well as Resolution Number 18007, which is consideration and possible planning commission recommendation to the Corte Madera Town Council regarding approval of, one, a conditional use permit, two, design review, and three, a signed permit to allow for construction and operation of the Amy's Drive-Thru Restaurant at 5839 Paradise Drive.
Second?
Okay. Commissioner Bundy?
Aye.
Commissioner Friedman?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Vice Chair Metcalf?
Aye.
Chairman Chase?
Aye. It's a pleasure to say yes. And you have some appeal rights to read, Mr. Bush?
No, so this is a recommendation to the Town Council, so...
More not even design review is going before the council, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, go forth.
It's a beautiful project, and we really appreciate it. I know a lot of hard work has gone into this. It's incredibly thoughtful. It's way better than a mattress store. And so, thank you all. I am very excited. When, assuming that this all continues to go forward, what is your projected start date on the demo and construction?
We're hoping for kind of 2019 summer or fall opening. We haven't fully worked out the timeline yet.
All right. So that's off the record, but anyway. All right. If you guys want to evacuate right now en masse and in orderly fashion, so we can continue our meeting, that would be great.
Thank you very much.
How do you like?
Okay. That's a fabulous thing. So now we go on to Commissioner Reports. So Bob, you covered for me last Town Council meeting.
Yes. Yeah, primarily, I was taking up with discussions about the Planning Department. Adam introduced the members of the Planning Department, and then really went into a long discussion about plans for the Acela tracking software, which they believe will capture past data as well as future data. Ask Adam if you have any other questions, or he'll give that in his report. Todd and Daria discussed the 1819 budget. I've had some savings from police and fire consolidation. Still, they're, they're working on covering the potential and retirement health liability. They talked about AB 1912, which is a proposal that would affect the ability of communities to form and fund JPAs. It would make it really very onerous and a real problem. So they were hoping that that didn't pass out or get, you know, get voted in.
Sorry, what's a JPA?
Joint Powers...
Joint Powers Agreement, that the, such as our Fire Department and Police Department and Ross Valley Paramedic Authority, and these are all JPAs, that allow consolidation, which then allows for governance and significant cost savings, efficiencies. It's the way that most communities have found to consolidate and share services.
Yeah, but aren't they now, I think, on 1912 is talking about the pension liabilities...
Pension liabilities associated with JPAs.
With the JPAs.
Yeah. Judith may give us some information on that, if she wants to elaborate.
I'll be as brief as I possibly can at this point. The proposed legislation currently, when you form a JPA, there's, you know, one agency will absorb the employees, but the prior pension obligations for the employees for Public Agency A stays with Public Agency A, the prior pension obligations for B. And under the, briefly, in my brief understanding of the proposed legislation, is that for JPAs, would then, it would increase the risk that if for some reason one of the public agencies was insolvent, not available, like a special district didn't exist or anything, the other participants would be responsible for that pension liability. So it would increase exposure for pension obligations of not only the public agencies participating in the JPA, but you may have to assume jointly, severally, the obligations for the other agencies also participating.
They don't have enough to do up there. They have to come up with stuff like this.
Okay. Anything else you want to say about the meeting?
No.
Okay. I want to ask Adam about the software, but, or anything else you want to say?
Sure. No, that's fine. I mean, basically, I think as we discussed, part of one of, one of our things that we've been working on, and this somewhat relates to our improved customer service agenda, if you will, is to really improve our permit tracking software, which takes up an inordinate amount of time, both internally, and then also doesn't really provide a public interface for folks to check in on their status of their building permits. Other communities have this, and we think it's, it's sort of like a win-win, but it obviously costs money. So we had our building official, Brian Fenty, along with Tracy Hagerty, who both, you know, deserve credit for bringing this forward and doing all the research. And ultimately, the council accepted and, that we put this on for the budget for our Planning and Building Department. It's gonna be for all departments as well. It's not just for planning. So it's really something that I think will help us be more integrated, more efficient. We're gonna get some technology. We can have our inspectors do inspections in the field, and we have iPads and things like that, and do stuff that I think we, we need to do to sort of move into what our expectations are, really. So, that was, that's the premise of that, that will probably, you know, there's a ways to go. It will take probably the full, a good eight months to twelve months for the full implementation of that to roll out and become sort of like go-date. We have to get through the contracts and the purchasing, and then get everyone on board. So, that's in a nutshell, and that's it for now.
Okay.
Kind of...
It was a good presentation at the council. You did a great job.
Oh, thanks. I appreciate it.
Yeah, I, I don't, I'll talk to you offline about all that stuff. I'm just interested in it. So, beyond that, anything else the Planning Department wants to report to us?
I will say, and this, I guess, gets into the next discussion here, if I may. You know, we had sort of reserved the next meeting, actually, for potentially, if needed, this might go to the next meeting. At this point, we actually don't have, because of that, we don't have anything lined up for the next meeting. So, we may be, we may be canceling that meeting if we don't have anything to do. So, just a note on that. And...
Could we bring anything else forward for the next meeting, or there's nothing else that's ready to come?
Right. That's, that's what I'm saying. We'll, we'll look at some, if there's opportunity to do anything else, but at this point, I don't, we don't have anything immediately ready to, to come forward. Anything else? I guess I can note, I am gonna be away for the first Planning Commission meeting in June. Gonna be on a vacation. And just to add to that.
Okay. Phyllis, did you have something?
I had a question for Adam. I was just curious, and I think it's okay to ask this here. The questionnaire that you came up with that's on the Chronicle, is that what it's called? Asking people about their...
Yes.
What kind of response are you getting with that?
Sure. Yeah. No, I, I mean, I keep, we, we didn't, I think we got, specifically for the Planning and Building Department, we got about seventy to eighty responses.
Good.
You know, not bad. I was, I think I was hoping for a little bit more. But it's generally, I think generally positive feedback. I think it served its purpose. There's some things, clearly, that I think, areas where we can improve, and that was really a tool for our internal use to really, myself and management, at least in our department, to think through how we, again, can respond to some of the, I think we got mixed. I was surprised to get any sort of actually, "Great job!" comments, but we got some of those. But obviously, other areas where people felt that we could do better. And so, we'll, we'll likely, I think, the idea is that we would do it again next year. You know, we'll do, try to do the same sort of thing. And make, maybe make like April the custom, you know, take our survey month or something like that, so.
And the other departments now picked...
Yeah, and actually Parks and Rec got a lot of, they actually got the, quite a few carpets back as well, and Public Works. I mean, it's for all the departments, so.
I think that when you took the survey, it just said, which department did you interact with most recently? And so, it fell to that. And maybe for next year, you know, if you sent the survey out to people that actually had interacted with the department...
Direct.
...you might get a more direct feedback.
Yeah.
Well, in the beginning, in the beginning, wasn't it just the Planning Department that it was sent for?
Yeah, and we thought it would be. But we did, we did specifically send it to all thirteen hundred of our, anybody who submitted an application for a building permit or a planning application. Not only the applicants, but contractors as well. So, we did focus, tried to get as many of people who were specifically interacting with us. But in any case, I thought it was, it's easy, it's relatively easy to do, and it's nice to just get, hear back from, from folks.
That's good. I will say, again, I think you guys did such a great job on the staff report here, and the traffic report was rather exceptional. And that data is very useful for some other projects around here. I started actually comparing it to nineteen eighty-four traffic data from the, from the Hahn Project.
Oh, interesting.
It looks almost the same in terms of structure of the data, but back then it was two and three hundred cars, not nine hundred and a thousand cars. So, anyway.
Well, thank you. I think it's, all the credit goes to really Doug, who's been dreaming about drive-throughs for the last three weeks. So, I think he's...
Yeah. There was a lot of...
Did an outstanding job.
Yeah.
There was a lot of opposition to it, and I think it, the quality of the application that you steered through and what you created really took a breath out of that. So I think it, you know, it's... it, you know, it's a, it's not one of these applications that you feel like there's a downside to this thing in the way that it's couched or some sort of form of what we're having to accept as a town. It's really quite good, so, but I mean it, about trying to figure out ways to take pieces of this and say, you know, where can we put in, these guys put solar wherever they could stick it, you know, and why can't we get to that or get to, you know, find incentives somewhere?
But what they also did is they gave us a complete picture. Too many times we get the application and we say, well, where's the landscape plan? Where's the detail for this? And we're told, oh, when we go to get the building permit, we'll do that. This has it all in front of us.
Well, they got a protein going here, so if you look at that...
Yeah, I mean, it's the, it's the quality of the...
This is the best material ever.
You probably also spent some times as much to get to this point as you name it.
Those materials boards are very hard to keep in our physical records. We like when they fit in the folder and we can file them away, and it's like a couple boxes worth, so, that's the downside of that, but it's pretty nice. Tangible.
I had to see this one.
So...
I can't let you take it.
Okay.
The new Public Works building, I'll handle all that.
Yes.
So does anybody have any comments on the minutes here?
No, I'd like to move for approval.
Okay, all right.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, move to adjourn. You are adjourned.